It's six o'clock on March 1st, 2022, and I'm calling to order this meeting of the City of Placerville Planning Commission. Would everyone please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we, do we have a flag anymore?
I think it's her own.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Rivas, could you please call roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Yes, seating.
Vice Chair Gopper?
Here.
Commissioner Keeney?
Here.
Chair Lepper? She is out. Commissioner List?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
So our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do any, would any commissioners like to move any items on the agenda?
Move for adoption.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So, moving on to our consent calendar, approving the minutes of the regular planning commission of the January 4th, 2022, meeting.
If no objection, move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Do any members of the public have comments on the consent calendar? I see none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now, moving on to item number seven, items of interest to the public, non-agenda items. This item is reserved for items that are not on the agenda, for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, that is within the jurisdiction matter of the planning commission. State law prohibits the commission from acting on these items. Speaker time will be limited to three minutes. Is there any individual of the public who would like to make comments on an item not on tonight's agenda? I see none. So we're now moving on to item number eight, written communications, non-agenda items. Mr. Rivas, were there any written communications on non-agenda items?
We have no written communications. Vice Chair Gopper?
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, presentations and educational workshop sessions. Are there any presentations or educational workshop sessions tonight?
Oh, we have none scheduled.
Thank you. So we're now moving on to item number 10, environmental assessments and public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. I'm now opening the public hearing for the 939 Lincoln Street Site Plan Review. Mr. Rivas, could you please give us the staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Gopper, and members of the planning commission. This request is under Site Plan Review 21-02, and it's a request made by Scott and Karen Bramhall, and they are in the audience tonight regarding their residence at 939 Lincoln Street. And it's located at the southeast corner of Lincoln Street and Coleman Street. The site is located within the city's Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historic Residential District. This request is involving three components. The first component is a 168-square-foot existing shed, and they propose, or they have started, the installation of new board and batten siding, or the old siding, replacing an existing door, window, and exterior light. But I do want to add that since the shed is not visible from any street, only a building permit is required for these improvements. So the commission need not take any action on the shed. The second component is a 360-square-foot existing two-car garage, and the request is to install new bat, new board and batten vertical siding over the existing horizontal wood lap siding, install exterior door on the back, which is the east elevation, side in place of an existing window, and then repurpose and install that window on the west side, that'd be the side facing the house, and install an exterior lighting over the automatic garage door. That would be a black goose neck style barn light. Component number three is the existing house, and they are proposing, none of the work has been done yet, so this is all in the future, but they're looking for approval to replace the original front door with a similar styled door, and replace seven original single-hung wood windows with new vinyl white, single-hung windows to the existing single-story, single-family residence. This request is before the commission because there are exterior alterations to the building located within the city's historic district, and alterations would be visible from a public street. Site plan review and the historic buildings in the city require planning commission review and approval before a building permit may be issued. The criteria of the commission must evaluate modifications to the buildings within an historic district per city code that are requiring that they maintain the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings, and in accordance with the City of Placerville Development Guide. Staff finds that this request, as analyzed, is consistent with the city's general plan design element, is compliant with the 10 Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, and is consistent with the Site Plan Review criteria under the city code, 10-4-9, and with the applicable guidelines within the city's development guide, but I want to emphasize as modified by the recommended conditions of approval that's contained in your staff report. So in summary, number one, regarding the existing shed, and that's to install new board and batten siding over old siding, replace existing door, window, exterior light, but since the shed is not visible from any street, only a building permit is required for these improvements, and the shed is therefore not a part of this consideration and approval. So there will be no conditions of approval pertaining to the shed. Number two, regarding the existing two-car garage, install new board and batten vertical siding over existing horizontal wood lap siding, will cover the original wood lap siding. It is staff's opinion that since the accessory structures were customarily sided with board and batten, the commission may allow for this improvement, although not meeting a more strict definition of the Secretary of Interior Standards, which typically would have required either rehab or replacement of same-for-same wood, vertical wood batten siding. The addition of the black goose neck light fixture is architecturally in keeping with the historic character of the property, in staff's opinion. The other improvements to be made to the garage are not visible by any street, and then may proceed with a building permit, this being the exterior door in the rear of the garage and the relocation of the existing window. With regards to the existing house, the applicants propose to replace the original front door with a similar styled door and replace seven original single-hung wood windows with new vinyl white, single-hung windows to the existing, single-story, single-family residence. The replacement door and the windows, as proposed, would not meet the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings, would not meet the city's development guide or applicable city code, and would not be consistent with the city's general plan. So staff finds that the proposed work, with the exception of the replacement of the windows proposed and the front door, would not diminish the historic integrity of the district, and would complement the site and surrounding area through the use of these materials. So staff is recommending that the planning commission take the following actions. One, make the findings that are contained in Attachment C of your staff report. Two, conditionally approve Site Plan Review 2021-05, subject to the conditions of approval provided herein as Attachment D, and modify Condition of Approval Number One to add, beginning with the sentence "existing house," and it starts, it says "replace original front door with similar styled," and I'm adding "wood" door, and then adding "like-for-like," and everything else remains the same. So I just want to add then, to the conclusion of the staff report, staff did receive three comments via email from Daniela Chopin, Robert Elliott, and Frank and Kelly Medina, and they were all in favor of this request. Hard copies have been provided to the commissioners that are at the podium, or that are at the dais there prior to the meeting. So this concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and we do have the applicants, both Scott and Karen, that can answer any questions you have as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions to staff at this time?
Commissioner Friend? I have a couple of questions, Pierre, if I might. So on page three of this, well, let me, before I go there, with regards to the changes that staff is recommending, I presume that you've been in contact with the applicants?
I only met, I only met one of the applicants. I met Karen earlier today.
Okay.
When I wanted to take a look at the garage.
Okay.
I was just curious about the door, since we were trying to find in our record when that door was installed, and we found no permit for it. The permit isn't required, so.
And we're going to have an opportunity to speak with the applicants in a minute. Do you have any sense if they're amenable to the changes that you think need to be made in order to make it compliant?
Well, I would think the applicants did apply for replacement of the original wood doors with vinyl, so I would, I would think, based on their application, that is their preference.
Okay.
And I think their preference would also be to replace the original wood door with, I think it was a fiberglass door that they are proposing to install.
Okay. So we'll, we'll see how the discussion goes, but here, here's kind of my, the only struggle I have with this, on page three of the staff report, the second paragraph, "Since the home is estimated to have been constructed in 1881, based on the assessor's office, it was probably constructed as a bungalow-style home with major modifications made over time, giving the home a Victorian appearance." So my first point is, I'm challenged a little bit with how, what standards were to apply. I mean, why wouldn't we apply standards to the bungalow? Or since this, this home has evolved, right, over the decades or century, you know, frankly? You know, how, how tight should we be in terms of, of holding of those standards? So I'm, that's just kind of a rhetorical question, I think. I mean, if the applicants are fine with doing whatever changes, it's a moot point, but I hope you can kind of see where I'm at. If the structure was never originally what it is now, then, you know, what are we, A, restoring it to? Then the other thing that I, that I'm slightly confused on, it says that, that this is before the planning commission because it's a code compliance action, and that according to the staff report, they had begun the work on the siding of the shed. But the shed's really not subject to review, right? I mean, it can't be seen from the street. So I'm, I'm confused as to how it emerged as a code compliance action. Certainly, the garage and the house would be, but since they started on the shed, which is not visible, I'm curious as to how that happened.
Yeah, it was my understanding that, that there was work done to both the shed and the garage.
Okay.
The garage, you know, definitely required a building permit. Staff would agree with you that typically, we don't require a building permit for a shed that's under 120 square feet, but if there's electrical involved, then it would require a building permit.
Okay. And then the last thing I want, just a comment, or a note I want to make for the record is, I did read somewhere in the report that the applicant indicated that they had no idea a permit was required, and as soon as they were informed, they stopped work, and so we're here tonight, and I think that speaks to the applicant, so.
Yeah, that, that is correct, and if I may, Commissioner Friend, with regards to your question about the bungalow-style home and modifications made to a Victorian, so basically, I think when those changes were made, it was very difficult to find records of that being done, so that could have been done in 1910, for example. So I think you're dealing with a home that was long before permits were required, and it still would then be considered historic, even with those modifications that were meant to bring the home to a more level of elegance, if you will.
Sure.
But that would have been done quite some time ago, still meeting the intent to maintain the historic integrity of the house, even though it had been probably changed, but that's, it's very difficult to really substantiate that. I'm trying to remember where exactly I saw that. It was some writings and something.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, thank you.
Are there any other questions to staff? I see none, so we're going to move on to the applicant. You can approach the podium and speak on this application.
One of the things we found in the house, previous owners had left pictures of the house back as far as, I think about in 1930s, and that's when we discovered that the porch had been changed, and the back porch had been changed, and kind of gingerbread-y things had been added to the house, and that's how we knew that the house actually was actually more of a bungalow style. It had similar, like clapboard siding on the porch, rather than this gingerbread, and then they also painted the house in kind of Victorian style. If you guys have a picture, it's kind of four different colors. It was originally all white. The garage, we did not start on the garage. We did nothing to the garage. We knew that you couldn't do anything that faced the street. I think a neighbor told us, or a realtor, I can't remember. So we didn't do anything to the garage. We did do the shed because we were told, started the shed, because we were told that anything that you could not see from the street, you could go ahead and do, and then we got a letter from the city saying, "What are you doing? Please stop." And so we did. We only changed the siding in the front of it, and the front door, and added, and redid the window. The window is in the same spot. The front door were carriage doors, and we put French doors on them. It already had electricity, but we could not find where they had been done and who had done it, so.
But it's been updated. The electricity is.
Had been updated. You could see where the, what is it called?
The power line.
Ceramic things came to the house.
Knob tube.
Knob tubing, and that had been removed, and then it had four, I think four, electrical plugs in it. It had an old, I think they used it as a, like a workshop. So he had had a bench built in there, someone, he or she, and then put electricity in there, and.
If I may, so I'm guessing you don't necessarily have a formal presentation for us?
No, sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to make another comment.
Sure.
I did appreciate all of the pictures and the descriptions that were provided. I thought that was very, very helpful. To me, and I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but the million-dollar question kind of is, can you live with the changes that staff says are necessary in order to bring this into compliance?
I just want to make sure I understood, so the request for the windows vinyl and the fiberglass door, that it's kind of wood grain look to it, but, you know, it is fiberglass.
You would rather it be wood.
You don't want us to do that, is what I understand. And the only reason I ask is because, again, there's not a lot of history, and clearly previous owners didn't go through the normal channels of permits, because there's a steel door in the back, and there's vinyl windows through the other, the entire side back of the house. So we were kind of hoping vinyl, and, you know, and we priced wood, because we obviously wanted that, but it was literally four times the cost of, for a Title 25, you know, proof window. And it, so, I mean, the price of one window is almost the cost of all the windows.
Right. Okay. We can have a discussion on that, then. Thank you for that clarification.
You bet.
Are there other questions to the applicant?
Noticeable in the pictures in the front door, you have a, a screen door. Is that going to remain on the, on the door when you put the new one up?
I don't know. It, right now, the, the bottom of it is kind of old.
The gap, so we, if they want us to include a screen door, we're happy to do that. I'd get a new one, though, because the other one, it doesn't fit at all, and the bugs would get in, so if you want to make that a requirement, we are perfectly fine with that.
Well, my point was that if you're going to, if you're going to leave the screen door up, it would block whatever door you put behind it.
Oh.
Yeah, it, it, that's a good point. The one that's there now does block.
Block the door.
Sure. I hadn't thought of that.
Are there other questions? I have a few, if you don't.
Oh, go ahead.
So one of the questions I had, you said you had some photos dating back to the 1930s. Do you know if the garage was there at that time?
It was.
Okay, so the garage dates back to at least that period of time.
Yeah, it was there. It just didn't have, at one time, it had like the, like carriage doors, kind of like, no window, and then those were removed at some point, and then it was just an open carport at some point.
Okay.
So.
There is one of the pictures that shows a, a board and batten shed that was in the yard.
Yeah.
Which is no longer there. You can see the back of the garage in the background of that picture.
Okay. And then the second question, kind of on the same lines, is why do you want to replace the horizontal wood lap siding with batten board siding on the garage?
It's, well, I mean, the smart answer is because it's what my wife wanted, but, yeah, we're just.
I like the style, but now we're thinking wood has gotten so outrageous that, in fact, we were talking about it today, that we think we'll probably just leave it and just replace the bad boards and keep the original siding.
Okay, so the, the original siding isn't deteriorated, or?
It's, it's starting to. It has major holes in it, as big as this. You could almost see right through it.
Some at the bottom, you know, near the ground are a little worn, so, I mean, it needs some definite TLC regardless.
Yeah.
And you think you'll be able to replace the individual lap siding boards that have deteriorated?
Exactly.
Okay. Because that's come before, the width sometimes is kind of hard to source, but you, you think you could just pull out the bad ones and, and?
That's what we're hoping.
Get something that looks, that is the same width and gives the same appearance?
Correct. Yeah.
We'd hope, but we don't know, though. Haven't, because literally, it was just today we're having that discussion, but I haven't done any investigating to see if, you know, those materials are readily available, or if it would require custom milling, which will now be as much as new board and batten, I'm sure.
Well, that doesn't matter, then.
Vice Chair Gopper, if I may, just, just provide a, a comment on that. I used to own an, an old house on Columbus Street, Columbus B., and it was built, it was built in 1906, and it had the shiplap siding, and the siding, the previous, the person I bought it from had put a fiberglass, or not fiberglass, just a fiber press board over the siding. It was, both were vertical, so I pulled all that off, and it looked really nice with, with the shiplap, but the shiplap was in terrible shape. I see why they just put the siding over it. So I took a sample of that shiplap down to Barnett and Sons in Sacramento, and that company has been around probably well over 100 years, and they had the original keys and were able to mill siding, and I re-sided that house.
Oh, wow.
So, and I don't remember, now, this was a while ago I did that, so it wasn't, it wasn't very expensive, you know, doing the actual milling. It was more the cost of the wood, but I just let you know, if you're looking at doing that and trying to tie in that, that style of wood, I would, I would check with Barnett and Sons.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Friend?
On this point, though, then, since you haven't made a decision, and the application before us is to allow for the board and bat, I would think that you'd, you'd probably want to stay with that, because you're not obligated to go that way. If you refurbish the shiplap, then no problem, but at least you would have the permissions, assuming it would be granted, to go with the board and batten, so.
Okay.
Would we still need the permit if we just do patchwork, repair the shiplap?
No, repair, repair work does not require a permit.
Okay.
Thank you. Learned a lot.
Are there any further questions for the applicant? Let the record reflect, there are no members of the public here tonight, so we will now close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
So I, just for my fellow commissioners and for staff, particularly with the information that there's already vinyl windows in the structure, my inclination would be to grant an exception to the guidelines. I, I believe in the guidelines, I support them, but in, in this case, and again, since the structure isn't even what it was originally, historically, it's, it's different, I, I think a case could be made for, for the exception, and, and I would be happy to, to approve that, assuming, Pierre, that doesn't run afoul of the law or something, that we have that discretion, I would make the finding that there are already vinyl windows. If there weren't, I would not, I'd be far less inclined to do that, but since there's already vinyl windows in there, then I think that is a finding for an exception. But that's where I'm going to have with this.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Gopper, I can certainly respond to Commissioner Friend's comments that he just made now and the previous one.
Uh, yes, please go ahead.
Sure. Basically, staff's discretion is very limited, so staff does not have the discretion to allow for change of wood to vinyl, or change of wood to fiberglass, like as in the door. Staff is to make recommendations based on the requirement that we adhere to the Secretary of the Interior Standards as required under the code. The commission may find something different, but staff can't, can't recommend that. To your point about other vinyl windows then, on the, on, maybe on an opposite side of the building, those windows can be swapped out with just a building permit. If those windows, if those vinyl windows that were already replaced, which they may have been by the vindlers, I don't know, they would not be subject to the Secretary of the Interior Standards, because they're not visible from a street. So you, it, it would be inappropriate to use that then as a reason to modify windows that are visible from a street. That would be staff's opinion on that, trying to make that, that can leap. I don't think you can make that leap.
But, but to be, but we still have the discretion, or we don't?
Well.
You, you, the finding might be weak, or the rationale might be weak, but.
I wouldn't recommend doing that, because you open up, you know, basically, you would open a can of worms, then we could, then we don't have a Secretary of the Interior Standards that would apply to windows if there's any change on some elevation of the building that's not visible to the street. We're only looking at the elevations that are visible from the street, and so that's why we don't look at the vinyl windows that happen to have been done in the back.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner List.
Yeah, my only comment to that is that if, if they decided to, to do the wood windows in the front at, at exorbitant price, you have one type of window there, you have another type of window on the other side, I think it, it devalues the property. I would much rather, if, if I'm a buyer, come in and see that all the windows were alike. If the windows that we're going to put on the street side are, look like the windows that we're taking out, the material that the frame is made out of, I, I don't have a problem with approving a, a vinyl window if it looks like the window that is being, it's replacing.
Commissioner Keeney?
I'm thinking this over. It's, I, I think these are both what Commissioner Friend and List are talking about, kind of, and I'm, I'm struggling with that, because as Commissioner Friend noted, the change from the bungalow style to the Victorian style, we're not really sure when, but just for sake of argument, we'll say 1930, we still have a vintage structure, and so from preserving the historical appearance, that is now our new place in time, so it's not exactly original as the, it was built, you know, back in 1881, but it's caught in time in 1930, so that is now the, the standard that we need to make sure is maintained. And I also hear what Commissioner List just said about having two different types of windows, when, when you're in the room, if you're looking this way, and you've got that style, and you kind of look this way to the side yard, and you've got a different style. You know, I, I appreciate that, although, you know, with, with vinyl, the things they're doing with, you know, new decorative things, you know, you can have a vinyl that, that kind of, that looks nice, or maybe even looks like, a little bit like wood, has a grain to it, but that's not what we, we're not here to maintain a value of, on resale. What we are charged with doing is preserving that look from the. we are charged with doing is preserving that look from the street. And that's, so, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying. We're talking about seven windows and you are going to improve the energy efficiency, the comfort of your home by going with a new standard. Unfortunately, getting true wood windows is going to be a lot more expensive. But our responsibility is to keep that house, the appearance of that house in that neighborhood, maintain its integrity. So you're changing out an old wood window, single hooded wood window. I am more in favor of sticking with the Secretary of Interior Standards and the staff recommendation for that, that front aspect to improve or to maintain the integrity of the look. And I want to take a second here to tell everyone, I, I did drive to the site. That's something that we're supposed to do, announce that we've done a site visit. I didn't really do a site visit. I, I am more or less familiar with Lincoln and Coleman, and so I, I did drive that area after I reviewed your application. And up and down that street, there have been changes, particularly metal. That, those are the ones that just, to me, really degrade the look of, of, you know, there, there aren't mansions up there. They're, but they are distinctive, different types of architecture. And those metal windows really looked, looked bad to me. And then I started, and I could notice that some had vinyl. And it really isn't the same. And, you know, we, we aren't experts. We've been introduced to these concepts. We have some experience in our community. But just as, you know, as a planning commissioner, a layperson, you know, I can see the difference. And I, I'm going to argue that we follow the staff recommendation for the, the wood, like-for-like wood. And also for the door, that was something that struck me in your application. You mentioned that you wanted to go with fiberglass. And again, you know, that's a more energy efficient, probably it's going to seal better, make your house more efficient and comfortable. And then we talked about that screen door. And, and looking at the pictures and when I drove by, yeah, the screen doors, it doesn't really matter what's behind it. That's a, that's a decorative element. So I struggled with the door. But the screen door also, I see that as being something temporary. I, in my own home, I had an ugly aluminum screen door that, that thing was out. I mean, it just, it made the whole front door look so much better. Not the same case for you folks. You have a, you, you might replace it with a, a similar decorative screen door. And so, but again, I think we need to respect the intent of these SOI standards and require that a wood door be replaced with another wood door. And just so that we have, do all that we can to protect the, the look, the integrity of, of that house. And then the houses adjacent, because there are some other houses that have been redone. And, you know, those, the houses where they went to all the effort, they're, they're just wonderful. They're adorable. They look, they have an old style, but they also have a, a freshness to them, you know, because it is new material. So with all due respect, I, I think we should follow the staff recommendation as, as amended to include the wood door as well.
So.
If I'm, may I respond to her?
Uh, sure.
Thank you. My, my problem with, with that is, like he said, a wood window is going to cost four times as much. So they have seven windows. You're, you're probably looking, I don't know what the figure would be. So then they have the choice. Do we have an energy efficient home with vinyl windows, or we can't afford the wood windows, so we stay with what we have and we waste energy? And in this day and age, I mean, I just got my, I just got my propane refilled, and I almost fell over. And, and I'm going, okay, changing out these windows to a window that looks the same from the street. Now, I can understand the metal windows. I agree with you 100%. And you go through that community and you can see the aluminum windows that people have put in over the years. And they look terrible. I agree with that. Here we have an opportunity to say to them, we'll allow you to put in a vinyl window, a vinyl clad window, if it looks like what is being taken out. Okay? There's, there's a difference between saying, okay, you have these nice wood windows, or they look nice, but they're single pane and they're, you're losing energy. Okay? We're all losing energy. And the, the aluminum, so, so I, I can see that, that we need to be very restrictive. But from the street, I can almost guarantee you, a good vinyl window, you would not be able to tell it's not wood from the street.
So I'm just going to say where I'm at on this. So I mean, I think for me, it's always default to what our ordinance says, which, which references the Secretary of Interior Standards. And I see basically three areas where there's variation from that. One is on the wood windows. I do think like-for-like is necessary if they're going to be replaced rather than restored. I also see this on the door, the wood door. And lastly, I also see it on the batten board siding on the horizontal lap siding on the garage. I do think that is a historic structure as well, a building. And when we look at the Secretary of Interior Standards, it doesn't distinguish between a building type. It doesn't say accessory buildings this doesn't apply to. And to me, it's important to stick with what our ordinance says and what the standards say, and stick to them to be consistent with everyone that comes before us asking for a permit application.
So, so clearly staff did not have any difficulty with the board and batten. So I'm not, I'm not sure that that's even a challenge for us. But I'm going back to Commissioner Keeney's observations and, and the argument, which I, I think is, is well reasoned. The, the Secretary of Interior Standards and guidelines are not absolute, though. And even what's referenced here in the staff report, okay, the historic character of a property will, I'm on page five, number two, will be retained and preserved. Removal distinctive materials or alteration of features, spaces and spatial relationships that characterize a property will be avoided. It doesn't say is prohibited. It says is avoided. And, and I believe this is a, this is a guidance. And again, as I said earlier, I, I support what the SOI is, is attempting to do. But I'm, I'm not sure that it is absolute and prohibitive in terms of what applicants and individuals can do. And this body does have the discretion. And I think there is a, a balance of, of multiple features that come into play. The, the issues of cost, energy, uniformity, and appearance, I think, are all valuable. And if we made the decision to go ahead and say, yeah, there, this is a property that qualifies for an exception, then the, you know, the worst thing that could happen is somebody, somebody might appeal it. The, the way it's leaning right now, it's probably going to go to council anyway in the absence of a fifth member of the commission. But I, I would strongly recommend that, that we stand back. The SOI is, again, is not an absolute document. Okay? It provides guidance. And here's an opportunity for us to apply those principles. And at the end of the day, particularly in this neighborhood, and as Commissioner Keeney mentioned, you know, the metal aluminum windows, which are so horrid, right? I mean, but they're, they're period. I grew up with those as a kid. And so that's what you, you put in, in homes. What they're planning, what the applicant's planning to do in no way, I, I think, is going to detract from the appearance, the historic character, and actually will, will be an improvement. So I, I support what the applicant is requesting, and I would, I would not require the substitution of the vinyl windows that they want instead. I'm, I'm happy with, with everything else. So that's where I would be.
I'd like to follow up on that. You're right, the, they aren't absolute, the SOI guidelines. But as I draw that street, the lesser vinyl windows are obvious. You know, we, we all are familiar with the, the metal clad. And so there are vinyl windows, windows and there are vinyl windows. Would you be comfortable with having, allowing staff to review a, a, a final window design? And I, I'm sorry to put more work on staff, but I'd, I'd rather have a decision tonight rather than pass this on to city council. What I'm thinking is, like I said, there, there are inexpensive, and then there are vinyl windows that may look more, may have some sort of wood pattern to them and may fit in better with the current style of the house. I, I hesitate with this. I, I, you know, I, I want to work with my fellow commissioners and, and also respect what you just said, Nicole, about following our, our ordinance. But I also want to see some, I'd like to, I'd like to have a resolution and, and see some forward progress and, and make our, you know, property owners satisfied. But the reason I hesitate this is we've been warned against ersatz. You know, there, there is, you know, faux this and that. And we've had people talk about that. And, and we need to respect that, you know, sometimes it's, what, you don't want the Disneyland look. You, you know, you, we've struggled with the other applicants. You know, they wanted to use a, a synthetic this or that, you know, on the front of the house. And, and we talked about that. You know, some of us are more comfortable with, with that than, than others are. Other people want, you know, the real, the real thing, the like-for-like. But how do you feel about having, having the applicant come forward with a sample and, and with staff review that, yes, that, that captures the style? Is that?
So I, I appreciate that approach very much. And I am with you in, in wanting to resolve it tonight. And I think it's best for everyone, if I may, through the chair to staff. Pierre, do you have any idea what the applicant is planning to put in? Did, did they bring any samples of the vinyl windows?
I seem to recall that they had an example of the window in their, as part of their application submittal. So it should be in your staff report.
Are you comfortable with the direction that Commissioner Keeney is suggesting that we go? That we, we, we could in fact approve the vinyl windows conditioned on them bringing a sample that, that staff would say, this is suitable, this, this would work. Given, realizing this is, this is a, this is a special situation, I think, right? And I, I do believe that it is. Are you comfortable going that way?
If that's the prerogative of, of the planning commission. You know, again, I think you have to look at the condition of the window because I think what the Secretary of Interior Standards is saying is you want to preserve the original building and the original material. So if it's, even if it's repairable, the preference is to repair the windows. And then if it has to be replaced, then it's like-for-like. But if it's the commission's prerogative to go ahead and allow vinyl, certainly staff would look at a replacement window where it would fit into the existing opening dimensions.
Yeah.
And so it would basically look the same from the street. You'd probably have to get very close to see whether it's, you know, wood versus vinyl. We can certainly do that.
Madam Chair, would, could I possibly ask the applicant to come back to the microphone?
Uh, yes. Could the applicant come back?
I, I, just a question for you. Since Pierre is talking about instead of replacing, but doing restoration, have you looked at restoration of those? Repairing them, actually?
We had, only because, I mean, the draft, it's pretty incredible, you know, talk about the cost. Our electrical bills blown our mind.
Oh, so.
We went from a 2,400 square foot to less than 1,000, and our Fijianese doubled. But that aside, the big issue is two are painted shut. I mean, it's a significant amount of work. But also whomever, someone took the weights out of them and they're gone. So they don't even stay, they, they're held by, we've got like these wood aisles.
Right.
That sit. So they're just, they don't function at all.
Okay. All right. So, so from your perspective, restoration really is not a viable. The options we're left with is, is vinyl, if, if that's possible, that look as close to the original as possible, or replacing those with, with like-for-like, which is extremely expensive?
Yeah. I mean, I understand. We absolutely can get samples, whether it's a fiberglass or, because I think the samples I included was maybe for Marvin, I think was the last one I got. I also got an Anderson quote.
Okay.
But, and they're not, they have a vinyl end, like a, I think like a fiberglass type style. But the big thing is, a lot of the fiberglass windows have that, the piece that lays over, like the step over the frame, and you have these big white plastic things. And I agree, these actually have the wood, you know, framing around them, which certainly I think helps with the overall look that you guys really want to, you know, sustain.
Okay.
But we can, I'm happy to put together whatever you want. We just want to be able to get some windows.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate it.
Before, before you sit down, may I ask you a question? You included in your packet from Anderson windows and doors.
Okay.
Do you know anything about these windows? Are these the Andersons that are wood on the inside and a, and vinyl clad on the outside? Or are they a true vinyl window?
They are, hell, and I apologize, I should have had that in front of me. They are not wood on the inside. They were, you know, the through-and-through, all plastic.
Okay. Thank you. I'd, I'd like to further comment for the staff, for the, for the commission. Anderson makes a very high quality vinyl window. This is not your Lowe's, Home Depot type of vinyl. So looking at that, if, if they go with that type of window, and I assume that's what they, why they, they bothered to get this, a quote from Cordova, Rancho Cordova, I, they're after a quality window as a replacement. And I just, I think we need to take that into consideration.
Going back to your suggestion, suggestion, Commissioner Keeney, I, I would be willing to consider that. And, and I think there is a possibility for that. And, and that really is the major sticking point, I think, in, in this application.
For staff review?
Yeah. So, I mean, the staff, the staff review is, is, look, the, the, the big condition really is dealing with the windows. And if they can find something that, that works, then I'd like to give them that opportunity.
I'm having second thought. My thought now is I, I hate to put more work on staff. So I don't know what's going to be more work, have Pierre review samples and say, no, not this one, yes, that one. Or we could ask the applicant to come back and, and present to us what they actually have in mind. You know, we've spoken about vinyl. There are, there's composite as well as wood. There may be something that fits your budget, you know, as far as a composite that looks more like the wood window that, that you need to replace. So fellow commissioners, what do you think about balancing, you know, workloads here? I, like I said, I, I hesitate to put this back on staff. It really is our job. But how much of, what does our calendar look like? Could we have the applicants come back with, to show us the, the samples of what they're considering? And then we could approve that? Or is that, is that even more cumbersome than just having you review what, what they, samples that they have chosen?
No, I'm certainly having to respond to that. From a staff's workload perspective, I guess the, the basic decision the commission needs to make is, is it your preference to have the proposed windows by the applicant come back to you? Or do you want to make some more specific direction to staff so that staff will then consider your direction and the applicant would bring the proposed windows and the door to, to staff level? It's not a lot of extra work at the staff level because these changes require, well, the door wouldn't require a building permit. But we would just look at it and agree based on their pictures that the replacement door with a different material looks similar, or similar enough to the original door. With the windows, the window replacements will require a building permit. So staff will be looking closely at the windows anyway. And so they can certainly bring in some, you know, samples during their permit application process. And we could look at that and check that off. And then they can go forward and we can issue the permit to have them installed.
I'm willing to do that. I, I think. I think, I think there's compelling enough.
Want to have staff do the?
Yeah, I'm willing, staff does not seem to be objectionable to that approach.
Don't want to, yeah.
And I, and I think that there, there is a way to get, that we can meet, certainly the spirit of the law, the intent of the SOI, we can meet that and not place a heavy burden on the applicant. And it doesn't sound like it's a heavy burden on staff. So if I understand, then basically, we would be approving everything. If we look at Attachment D in particular, we'd be approving item one, then sub item one, and sub item two, dealing with the shed and the two car garage. And then with regards to item three, I'm happy with the, with the door. I don't think there's an issue with the door. But the issue is with the, the seven original single hung windows. And with regards to that, the applicant shall, the language would be the applicant shall return samples to staff, samples to staff that are adequate to meet the intent and spirit of the SOI. And assuming they can do this, staff can sign off on it. I think that's, that's really what we're looking at. Does that sound about right? And they may or may not do the board and batten. They may restore the wood, the shiplap, but this gives them the opportunity to do it. And staff didn't have a problem.
Was that a motion?
Well, that's kind of where I'd be going, is a motion. And if I don't see a lot of umbrage and guffawing at the diasthen, I'll go ahead and make the motion, I think.
I just wanted to have a bit more discussion.
Sure.
Since we're compromising a lot here on these, on the windows. And Nicole pointed out about, she was not comfortable with changing to board and batten siding. We've been hearing that possibly they could just replace, actually more affordably, replace the failing pieces of siding. I wanted to hear from you, Nicole. Do you want to amend the condition of approval to disallow board and batten?
I would. And my concern here relates to criteria six in the Secretary of Interior Standards, related to restoring, if possible, features, significant features. And I do think horizontal siding is a significant feature of that structure. So I guess I would like to change under the existing two car garage, install new batten boarding siding over the existing siding, to state, keep, restore, or replace like for like horizontal wood lap siding. So they have the option of keeping their existing siding, restoring it, or replacing it with something in like kind.
Lap siding, yeah, okay. I think I've got my notes here. I really appreciate you saying something about that. I was leaning towards staff's recommendation. As you drive around, accessory structures may or may not have the same siding as the main house. And in fact, the shed, as an accessory, I think it always has had the board and batten. But if you drive in that neighborhood in particular, you see that that would be a way that a builder, a homeowner could save money. The board and batten's a little cheaper to install, so that might have been done at the time. And so then, you know, you need to preserve that. But in this case, we've got the lap siding, and I think that that actually is a really cool look from the street, that you've got, you know, that same uniformity. So I, I agree with that modification to condition one. Other commissioners, how do you feel about that?
I guess my only issue is that staff was happy to approve the board and batten. So from staff's perspective, it met the intent of the SOI.
I guess, can I ask that as a question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
So I do know that you made a comment during the staff report, that you felt like that did not actually strictly conform to the Secretary of Interior Standards. Can you please clarify where your standing is on that?
I'm sorry, which component?
The batten board siding on the garage.
Yeah, the reason why, I think if I recall, the reason why staff was okay with the board and batten was only because board and batten was extremely common on accessory structures. They didn't do, back when, they wouldn't put the more expensive wood lap siding or shiplap siding on an accessory structure. So that's why staff was fine with the board and batten. And there's a number of accessory structures within, throughout our historic districts that are board and batten on accessory structures. I think it's the home where you see the more expensive siding. I think that's where staff was leaning, that that was okay, just based on the fact that if that siding is in very bad condition, it is a more inexpensive way to repair the siding on the garage, but yet maintain the historical character of the, of the district. You may disagree, but that's sort of where staff was going on that.
Okay.
And from my perspective, Commissioner, that would go to, to the, the assessment that the shiplap is, is a significant historical feature. And I don't think it is really, because board and batten, as staff indicated, was very, very common, particularly on accessory structures. So I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with the way staff is giving them the option. And as we heard, with the cost of materials, they may actually look at restoring. But I don't think, again, I don't think this runs afoul of the SOI. And again, it reduces the burden on the applicant, and I support that.
Yeah, I guess where I'm coming from is, I mean, I'm looking at the SOI, and I do think that it's on the property, right? Its historical character of the property will be preserved and retained. It also talks about elements from other historic properties will not be undertaken. So utilizing the adjacent properties that have board and batten on accessory structures is not really consistent with the language in the SOI. So that's my interpretation of.
But the historic nature, the historic nature of the board and batten is a historic nature.
But it's not the historic, it's not the feature that's currently being used that dates back to the 1930s on this particular building. I mean, it's not the historic character of this property. It's not the historic feature of this property.
So I would take that as a fairly strict reading of the SOI. And I think it's, it's our obligation to strike the balance. And it's a balance between the applicant, it's a balance between the neighborhood, it's a balance between the cost, et cetera. So again, I, like I said, staff was comfortable with it, so I'm comfortable with it. And I think we've got a fairly good compromise on a difficult, a difficult issue.
From a logistics point of view, one of the questions, or somebody had mentioned about replacing certain boards. And I've had to do that. And if you are not skilled at it, you can end up ruining the whole side of the building. Taking those boards, prying them up, getting them loose, pulling them out, putting a new piece in, is not as easy as a few words. So I would not count on being able to do that.
But we don't know that as we sit here today. And I am inclined to agree with Nicole about not changing, I realize that both the lap siding and the board and batten were of the time, for whatever reason. But if we approve tonight the change to board and batten, it is changing it. And we've heard from the applicant that, you know, maybe that's not exactly necessary. And so what I'm thinking is, would be more appropriate is to strike that change to board and batten, keep the lap siding. If you run into trouble, I mean, it would be another application, but if it's just not going to work, we can, you know, take it under consideration. I think where we sit tonight, what I'm hearing is that the House is kind of drafting, you're wanting to get the doors and windows taken care of. So that may be your priority. And maybe as you get into replacing the siding on the garage, if you want us to reconsider going to the board and batten on the garage, then would you be able to come back to us with that? I guess I'll ask you that question, please. Can we come back one more time?
Yeah, please come back.
I'm just trying to work through, see what we can do to respect the standards, preserve as much of the integrity as we can, but also with respect to, you know, what's reasonable for a homeowner.
Well, I think I was hoping to get a resolution today. And, you know, you brought up, I hadn't even thought through, I mean, because it was just today, the whole discussion, maybe just sustaining or maintaining the horizontal shiplap. But because of the way it's nailed, it's, they're over, and it is old brittle wood. I could, I can't, I agree 100% that I could be, you know, opening up an enormous can of worms. And, you know, so then the idea of having shiplap as an alternative, it'd be great to have that if we can get that, versus having to do another application. But, you know, I mean, ideally, that's what I'd like, but, you know, I understand you guys have, you know, it's a process. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
Appreciate hearing from, hearing your side.
Okay.
And my, my preference again is, is to leave options open for the applicant. If we strike the board and batten, then we've taken that option away from them. I think for the reasons just described, Commissioner List said, while it would be nice to restore, if that's a viable option, great, but you don't know what you're going to get into. Therefore, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. Because I think that probably this is going to wind up at council, frankly, but we'll see. I'm going to move that we approve site plan review, SPR 2105, and historic district review for the modifications as specified in the staff report. Adopted the staff report as part of the public record, particularly including the assessments made by staff and Attachment C, the findings for 939 Lincoln Street, A through E. And then with regards to Attachment D, item one, sub item one, approved request for the existing shed, the installation of new board and batten siding, and number two, existing two car garage, as stated in the staff report. And with regards to item three on the existing house, the applicant shall be able to present to staff samples of vinyl windows that would meet the requirements of the intent of the Secretary of Interior Standards. And staff shall have the discretion to determine if the samples provided by the applicant are suitable for that standard. Then items two through six, two through nine are adopted as presented in Attachment D. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I wanted to wait till we had a second to offer a friendly amendment. You stated vinyl. Let's, would you be okay with striking, I believe you said vinyl? I want to leave it open that they can look at the composite, the wood, the vinyl.
Yes, any, yes.
But with retaining the staff approval element?
Correct. Yes, I would accept that amendment.
Okay.
And you accept that amendment?
Thank you.
That's fine.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
I just want to say, I respect everyone's opinion on this, and I appreciate it. And I think it is difficult, and I don't make an exception to the SOI lightly. I just think in the totality for this particular project, that it was warranted, and I want to thank the discussion and the effort to get to a resolution. I appreciate it.
Vice Chair Gottberg, staff has a question for clarification. Did Commissioner Friend mean to include the door in addition to the windows?
Yes, so everything, condition in Attachment D, Pierre, you have item one, and then there's sub item one, existing shed, sub item two. The only thing I'm changing with regards to the house is dealing with the windows. So I accept the, the door description as presented.
Okay. Thank you.
As, now I'm not clear. Okay. Oh, maybe we should take a break. The, staff will have review over the door as well as the windows?
I'm, I intended that, but I'm happy to provide that.
That's, because that was, I'm looking, we had a slight change in, during the staff presentation, so I'm trying to make sure that I am clear that we're giving authority for both the door and the windows to.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
I accept that. Commissioner List, do you accept that?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
There's no further discussion? Could I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gottberg?
No.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Chair Lepers absent? Commissioner List?
Aye.
The motion passes three zero with me voting no.
It passes three to one.
Sorry, three one.
It's, the decision is appealable, right?
Yeah, the decision may be appealed within 10 calendar days to City Council.
But good luck to you. And appreciate your efforts.
All right. So now moving on to item number 11, continued items. We have no continued items tonight. Item number 12, new business. Is there any new business, Mr. Rivas?
We have no new business. Vice Chair Gottberg.
All right. Moving on to matters from commissioners and staff. Do staff have any matters that they would like to report to the commission?
Staff does. We will be scheduling a meeting for the March 15th, regular Planning Commission meeting. Before you will be another historic site plan review. This one will be for 3084 Sacramento Street, for replacement of windows and siding. Staff also proposes to bring to the commission the annual housing element progress report. That will be receive and file. And then just another couple of items to comment on. This coming Saturday, the city will be conducting a homeless camp cleanup, and that's the camp located at Forney Road, right? It's at the end of Main Street. There you go up Forney Road a little bit. Between Forney Road and the El Dorado Bike Trail, there's a camp. And so city staff will go in there with the assistance of El Dorado Disposal. They're going to be supplying us with a 20 yard roll off bin for recyclable materials. So we'll attempt to recycle all the cardboard, metal, glass, aluminum, that sort of thing. And then we'll use the city truck to cart out the regular, all the garbage and debris will be hauled to the Materials Recovery Facility. That will begin at eight. So that's just for your information. And then the last thing, I'm very happy to announce that the Development Services Department, the city, actually, we made an offer of employment for a building official in our department. We're very happy about that. I think it'll provide a lot of additional consistency and efficiency in our department because we will have an in-house, full-time building official reviewing, doing plan checks, doing inspections, and assisting the public with building division matters. So happy to announce that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Question of staff, if I may?
Yes, you may.
There's a, there's been a proposal, I can't remember what it's called, but for a pallet pop-up homes for homeless right next to the jail, right? And I can't remember the name of it. In any event, I believe that Deputy Sheriff Lykoff is proposing this, right? If, if that project were, they want to move forward, would that come to commission? Or is that exempt from our purview?
That would be exempt. The city does not have discretion over, over that particular use, is my understanding. But staff will certainly look into that, and there is the opportunity to bring it to the commission, sort of as an informational item. For example, staff is, has been working with the state of California, mainly the General Services Department and HCD, the Housing and Community Development. And they awarded to Jamboree, the developer, to put an affordable housing project at the former Placerville Armory. Now, that's state property, and the state or the city has no jurisdiction whatsoever for that project. But we've been courting with them, and we felt that it would be prudent, especially But we've been courting with them, and we, we felt that it would be prudent, especially during the environmental review phase, that they schedule a meeting before you to allow public input, in particular into the environmental assessment that was prepared. So we will be bringing that project before you, even though you don't have any real ability to affect changes to the project. You will have the ability, as will the public, to comment on that project. So if we can find that there's a similar ability for commission and public review and comment on that proposed homeless shelter program next to the jail, we'll certainly do so.
Thank you. And then one last thing I'd like to ask you to do, Pierre Forrest, for me, anyway. Anytime you receive an application for a housing project in accordance with SB 8 or 9, 10, I know it does not come to commission, there's no public input on those. But I think if you receive applications, I think it'd be nice if you could report such as part of your staff report at a commission meeting.
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Are there any other matters from commissioners? All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting of the planning commission at 7:11 PM.